Good morning, everyone. This is Rachel Gamble with Macon Bibb Public Affairs. We are about to get started. We're just getting the meeting set up on our website. Just a reminder to the participants, your microphone is muted until we begin. We'll be starting the meeting here shortly. Thank you. Hello, everyone watching. This is Rachel Gamble with the Public Affairs Department. We are getting this meeting streaming live to our website at maconbib.us. To all participants, your microphones are muted until we begin. We will be starting in just a few minutes. Thank you. One, two, three, testing for website audio. We are testing for website audio.
Good morning, everyone. Let me call to order this committee meeting. And begin first with this announcement, please. Pursuant to the instructions from the President of the United States, the Honorable Donald J. Trump, the Governor of Georgia, the Honorable Brown Kemp, as well as the Mayor of Macon, Bibb County, the Honorable Robert A. B. Rickett. The Macon Bibb County Committee meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May the 12th, will be available to the Macon Bibb County Commissioners by conference call only for the nine o'clock committee of the whole meeting as well as other committee meetings of facilities and engineering, economic and community development and operations and finance that ought to follow in that order. The commission chambers will be closed to the public and the press as we follow the recommendation from the Governor and the White House to limit public gatherings in order to slow the spread of COVID-19. Therefore, the public and press may only access this meeting simultaneously online at www.maconbib.us or www.facebook.com/maconbibcounty. With that having been said, we have a couple of announcements that we wanted to make to you. The first will be about the status of additional executive orders that have been issued by the Governor, Honorable Brown Kemp, and the connection to this COVID-19 health care emergency. And I'll call on Michael McNeil, please, at this point to kind of give us an update on the latest order. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Another week, and we have another executive order from the Governor. This one was, this came out Friday afternoon, late Friday afternoon, and relates to the renewal of weapons carry permits. And essentially says that if your weapons carry permit expired between February 13th and whenever this public health emergency ends, which is right now scheduled to end June 12th, then you get an extension of time to renew it. And under our code, or under state code, there are a couple of benefits to renewal. You don't have to go through the fingerprint process again, and the fee is a little bit lower. And Macon Bibb, a new license is $77, but a renewal license is only $30. And so this extends your renewal deadline. Normally, under the law, you have 30 days after it expires to renew. You now have 120 days after it expires to renew. Judge Harris has advised that the licenses expire between February 13th and March 13th will be prorated, depending on how much time was left when the judicial order, the emergency order first went into effect. And she's also advised that they're, they're ready to start processing applications for weapons carry licenses next week by appointment. They've been making appointments, and they already have about 400 new applications and about 300 renewals in queue. And so they'll begin processing those next week. But if your weapons carry license has expired during this pandemic, then you have an extra 120 days to renew.
Any questions of Commissioners of Michael about that executive order? And Michael, my understanding is that we are still under a quote-unquote shelter-in-place order for the elderly and medically fragile population through June the 12th, as well as a prohibition against having gatherings of more, 10 or more people when you can't provide for social distancing. Is that correct?
Right. The, the shelter-in-place is, right now, it's scheduled through June the 12th. You know, he's, he's extended the public health emergency a couple of times already. So if it extends again, then the shelter-in-place will extend along with that automatically.
And that may be the case. I understand the Governor has got a press conference scheduled for 11 o'clock this morning and is expected to extend the, the opening, or I should say, extend the mandatory closing of bars for an additional period of time. But we'll let you know when we find out what he says after 11 o'clock. Based on the status, as we understand it, we're going to continue to have Zoom meetings and to meet only by Zoom through our meeting on, well, through, through the meeting of the, that week of June the 13th, 12th or 13th. Our first live meeting will be June the 16th. So put that on your calendar, knock on wood, that we'll be able to meet live for the first time, June the 16th. That means that the special call meeting at four o'clock next week, June, excuse me, May the 19th, for the budget presentation will be by Zoom, four o'clock, special call meeting of the Commission next Tuesday, the four o'clock, and then we'll, that'll be followed by the regular pre-commission meeting at five o'clock and six o'clock meeting that evening. So we'll start an hour early for the budget presentation next week. One other announcement, understand that Ron Shipman of Georgia Power Company, his retirement was effective on May the 1st, and the new Director of the Southwest Region is Ms. Deion Tucker. We are excited about having Ms. Deion Tucker as our new representative to Georgia Power, and we'll invite her to come and perhaps join us by Zoom at our next meeting so we can say hello to her. Next item we want to get to is the financial outlook. I understand David Corbin is on the line with us. David Corbin with SMC Terminus, our financial advisors. Then we'll get to that momentarily. David, are you there, sir? Let me, you have, may have to unmute yourself. I understood he was on there. It was six.
I am. Good morning, everyone.
Good, good, good. Let me, let me ask the, ask the clerk, just for the purposes of the role, to have a role call and see how many Commissioners, be sure we've got a quorum present, even though I can see, we're going to try to do this right. So, Madam Clerk, would you call the role and see who's here?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Al Tillman. Everybody's got to unmute themselves.
I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner Tillman?
Tillman is here.
Commissioner Bivens?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Lucas?
Here.
Commissioner Schlesinger?
Here, here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Shepherd? Commissioner Watkins?
Here.
Commissioner Witten?
Present.
Good. Well, we've got eight of nine Commissioners on the line, more than a quorum. So thank you, everybody, for being here, and we appreciate that. Mr. Corbin, we appreciate your joining us this morning, and we have asked you to kind of give us a financial picture. I understand you've been looking at state numbers and, and may be able to help us as we prepare to formulate a budget for the next fiscal year and, and get your advice, consultation and opinion, sir. So the floor is yours.
Well, that's an awful, that's an awful big task this morning, Mr. Mayor.
It is, you're up to it, I'm sure.
Certainly so. Good morning again, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm David Corbin with Terminus Municipal Advisors and colleague to Matthew Arrington, who most of you work with closely. Mayor had, you know, talked to me on, on a couple of different occasions about what's the general outlook that's been going on in the economy and around the state, particularly for local governments. Concern has continued to build around how severely states and local governments are being hit by the steep slowdown in the economy. There are a number of things that we can, you know, go through this morning, and I'll try to be as brief as possible. And if there are any questions, I'll obviously be glad to answer them. But, you know, we also, also are the state's financial advisor and have been dealing with a lot of the financial stuff pretty closely, you know, since this thing started. Right now, I guess our whole theme has been to proceed with, with caution. At the end of the day, we don't know, we basically pulled the plug on the economy for about 60 days, and now we're trying to wake that patient up and trying to figure out how long the stress is going to last. And we tend to think it's probably going to last for quite a while. And as such, we have been pretty much advising our clients not, you know, first thing is not to do any harm and to wait to see when you get more accurate data about making any, any major pivotal decisions. Now, the interesting thing is your budget is, your budget cycle is coming, you know, right, right now, as opposed to many who are coming at the end of the year. So we're in a wait-and-see mode. I mean, if I look at some of the metrics at Macon, you guys have all seen retail, retail growth has been significantly slowed, or it's been adverse lately. Your unemployment rate since, it was, it was creeping up as early as December, but you're now close to about 4.8%. It was as low as 3 at one point in time. And so, you know, similar to the state who had a billion-dollar decline in revenues for the month of April, that is also trickling down to many of the local governments across, across the state, primarily in the form of retail sales and use taxes. Obviously, your courts aren't being used. You know, your property tax valuations, you're not going to see that right away. My guess is it could be, depending on how long this thing persists, you may see some of that take place, some reevaluation down in the next nine to 12 months. So, you know, I think the big thing right now is everyone's trying to hold on to as much cash as they can while, at the same time, maintaining the service delivery model that you adopted sort of pre-COVID. And that's, that's, that's the challenge at this point. So I'm sure your budget is going to get into specifics in terms of your cash balances, how long you can go, depending on the activity. Only thing we would advise to all of you is to be sensitive about using up your cash and until you can get a clear indication of whether or not this next phase of the federal stimulus is going to actually impact you to, to some degree. State earlier this year got roughly about $4 billion. I don't know if the money's actually come in yet, and I've not gotten any indication of how that money's going to trickle down to you at this point as well. So I think you have to say, hey, I'm, I'm in this on my own financially, and to told, to told differently. So with that, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm glad to take any questions and get as specific as you want on, on particular issues that may interest you.
Very good. Thank you, David. I, I appreciate that. Any questions by any of the Commissioners of David Corbin? Chairman Watkins, our Chairman of Operations and Finance.
Yeah, and this is on time. I appreciate it, and I thank you. One of the big concerns I have here locally and waiting on information back from finance is that, like you just mentioned, the 60 days of halt to our retail sale. To me, that's the kind of the biggest piece of, I think the state is aware now, and I'm looking forward to finding out here locally what that looks like. Do we know yet? Is that report available?
Because you're, so your sales taxes, in terms of the reporting of it, lagged 60 days. Now, I think, you know, March may have been a partial shutdown, if I recall, and April, clearly, most of April was fully shut down. So I, I don't know what the numbers actually look at, look like, but I'm sure you're going to have, I'm sure you're going to have a significant decline for those, you know, for that month and a half. The question is, again, how long, how long out will you see some significant drop-off in, in normal sales tax revenues? My guess is you're going to be in at least 10 to 15% down for the next several months. I think you should assume 10 to 15% is probably a good outlook for the next six months.
And as it relates to our other line items, Mr. Mayor, what are we seeing? Or, and I know sales tax lagged, but we do know what we collected, the difference in the courts and other things that we collect, we typically collect money, how we're looking there.
All right. And we'll try to get additional information. Chairman Watkins, my, my impression is, is that our March sales tax numbers, which are the most recent that we've had, we were down $200,000 from March of last year, if I recall correctly what Julie Moore told. And that was only for the partial month of March that we were shut down, last, last two weeks or so. So we have a full month in, in April, and, and that will be coming in shortly. But if you extrapolate from $200,000 for a half a month, then, then a whole month could be $400,000 to $500,000, but we don't know exactly where that is. Commissioner Lucas?
Yeah. Mister, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
David Corbin.
Corbin. Yeah. You're saying that the state will get $4 billion?
Freezing a lot. I'm getting a lot of interference.
$4 billion. You don't have any idea how cities and counties will fare as far as splitting it up, rather than Atlanta getting, we know Atlanta will probably get the biggest chunk of it, but how, how do we go about, or you have any idea how we go about making sure that we get a share of it? Do our legislators work on it? Do y'all work on it on our behalf? Do we need to lobby? What do we do?
Yeah. So let me, by way of background, the initial CARES Act that was passed allocated approximately $4 billion to the state. There were five, how the law was written, there were five governments that were able to participate in that directly. Four counties and the city of Atlanta got money directly for COVID-19-related expenses. The balance of it was to go to the state, and the state would then have to divvy that up or not, they weren't required to, they're not obligated to, but it was expected that the state would then take the balance of that $4 billion and distribute it among itself and local jurisdictions and, in that matter. That has not occurred at this point. And so, I mean, the mayor's asked me on several occasions, and we've, we've made that inquiry. I think, you know, when it comes to the money, quite honestly, it's all hands-on deck.
Yeah. Well, I know the state is having some real serious problems, so they're going to want to try and keep as much of it as they can. So I'm just wondering how we make sure that we at least get a portion of it, because we're going to have to do some juggling if we, if we don't get some of that money.
No doubt about that, Commissioner Lucas. And I will add that the Georgia Municipal Association, as well as the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, have worked together jointly to, to submit to the Governor a request for a, a sharing of that money. But Mr. Corbin, I understand that, that the biggest single hit or expense-wise to the state may be in unemployment. Can you talk to us a little bit more about that and whether or not they may use a lot of that money to try to shore up unemployment?
Well, you know, given, given, you know, given the numbers, that's probably, probably correct. And I think that's why you're seeing another phase of the stimulus bill, at least debated in Congress right now, because they realize that a lot of states aren't going to allow that money to kind of trickle down. It's going to have to be used to shore up unemployment. They're just, for the length of time that people are going to be, excuse me, on unemployment, it's just, it's, it's, they just don't have the funds to do it. There were never enough money in the trust fund to continue to pay people for the length of time that they've expended it out. So, again, I would pay close attention to trying to get money out of what's left, but I would also focus on this next care, this next portion of the stimulus bill that's supposed to provide direct funding to local, to local governments to handle some of the expenses, that particular loss revenue that's taking place now. I mean, Dallas, for instance, Dallas recently furloughed 500 employees. I mean, so you're seeing this with all of our clients around the country. The state has, as recently as of yesterday, sent out budget directions for another 14% cut to its original base budget. So they had originally asked for about a 6% cut earlier, pre-COVID, now they're asking for an additional 14% cut to their budget on top of that. So this is all playing out in front of us, and we're just going to have to, you know, continue to, I, I think the best, again, try not to put yourself in a position where you have to make drastic cuts, but be aware that the data is continuing to come in. As long as there's a, a partial shutdown and people are not spending money, local governments are probably hurt, just because you're simply not, you're not getting the retail sales taxes that you were getting pre-COVID-19. And the fact that employment, unemployment is raising, is rising up as well.
And the only other thing I'd add to that is, of course, our hotel motel taxes have been adversely impacted in a significant way, even though we have fared better than some, some communities, just by virtue of being on the interstate, et cetera. They, I understand our hotel motel taxes are down, and Chairman Watkins, I know you've already asked for comparison, you know, this year, last year, et cetera, and we'll try to get that information to you. Because as I say, my, my plan is to present the budget. It will have to be a balanced budget, as we all know. I'll have to submit that. It is not my intention to ask for or to accept a tax increase. We're just going to have to find a way, at least for the near term, to hold line on expenses and, and give, give our best guesses to kind of what revenue we've got. But I do think we're going to have to take a lesson in budgeting from, from the state. When they come back in six months later and kind of look and, and do a budget adjustment act, I think the same thing is going to be true for the Macon Bibb County Commission in January. So when the new Commission, new Mayor comes in, they're going to have to look and, and inherit the wind and, and be prepared to make a, a second adjustment to the budget in January, once we find out a little bit more about where we're going and what we're, what we're doing. Any other questions of David Corbin?
Commissioner Lucas, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
If not, David, thank you very, very much for being with us this morning. We, we appreciate it, and I'm sure we'll be back in touch with you and asking for additional guidance and direction over the next six weeks as we prepare our budget for FY21.
Yes, sir. We appreciate the opportunity. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you very much, David. We appreciate you being with us. That's, that's the only item that was on the committee of the whole justice financial outlook. So with that, if there are no objections, we'll adjourn the committee of the whole meeting and go directly to the next scheduled meeting, which is the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Chairman Jones is there, Commissioner Allen, Commissioner Watkins, Commissioner Schlesinger and Commissioner Bivens are the members of the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Chairman Jones?
Yes, sir. Can everybody hear me okay? Good morning.
Good morning.
All the Facilities and Engineering Committee to order. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Got a motion and have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schlesinger. All in favor, say aye. All right. Number two is appointments to authorities, boards and commissions.
You've got some background noise, Chairman Jones. Hold on. Any, if everybody, if you're not speaking, hit your mute button, please. We're, we're picking up some background noise. Somebody's got something playing in the background. Thank you. Go ahead, Chairman Jones.
Yes, sir. We've got several appointments to authorities, boards and commissions, and I'm probably just going to, well, we're just taking one by one. Letter A is a resolution appointing C. Warren Selby Jr. to post one of the Construction Board of Appeals. You'll recall that we talked about, County Manager Dr. Keith Moffett talked about bringing You'll recall that we talked about, uh, County Manager Dr. Keith Moffett talked about bringing that back, uh, construction. Yes, sir.
May, may, may I, uh, explain, explain the, uh, composition of this? And what I would like to do is have, uh, Michael explain, uh, the composition of this board, because it is set up by, uh, particular rules and orders of, um, expertise in that area and posts. So Michael, could you give a overview of how it is set up and then how the members were selected?
Um, I, I can speak to the composition. Um, I'd have to defer to, I guess, the mayor for, for how the members were selected. But there, there are five, uh, active posts and there are two alternate posts. So there'll be seven total members. Um, for the active posts, each of the five spots has a, has a different set of qualifications to serve in that post. So post one is a design professional or architect or building construction superintendent. Um, post two is a design professional with structural engineering experience. Post three is a design professional with mechanical and plumbing engineering experience, um, or a mechanical contractor. Post four is, uh, someone with electrical engineering experience or an electrical contractor. And post five is, uh, someone with fire protection engineering experience or a fire protection contractor. To alternate posts, uh, eat any of those five sets of qualifications, but they have to be different qualifications. See, the alternates, for example, couldn't both be fire protection engineers. They'd have to be two different sets of qualifications. And the terms are staggered so that, um, post one and alternate post one both expire at the end of this year, at the end of twenty twenty. Um, post two and alternate post two both expire at the end of twenty twenty one. And then post three expires at twenty two, post four expires at twenty three, and post five expires in twenty twenty four. And then after that, they're five-year terms. So there will always be someone coming off every year. Um, the, the five active, uh, members are the ones that will hear any appeals if someone has a building code appeal. But all seven members, uh, will, will be able to attend the meetings. They'll be able to set kind of the procedural rules, the ground rules for how any appeals are heard or processed and, uh, and that kind of thing. So the alternates, they'll, they'll only actually hear an appeal if there's some sort of unavailability for one of the active members. But other than that, they're, they're full members in every other regard of the, of the board.
So Michael, does each one serve a one-year term to begin with? It sounds like that's what you said.
They're, they're shortened staggered terms to begin with. So, so post one and alternate post one will just be from now until December thirty first of this year. And it'll renew January first for a five-year term, but it's subject to reappointment. Um, whoever is appointed can serve until their successor is, um, confirmed. But, um, for right now, it's just, uh, basically a seven and a half month appointment. The, uh, post two will be that plus a year. Post three will be that plus two years. And so it's staggered through the end of twenty twenty four. And then once we get to that point, everyone will be on a five-year cycle.
So you did it that way because we've got a new commission beginning January of next year?
Well, that's, that's how the, this, this was all, this whole ordinance was modeled after the, um, building code. The, uh, International Code Commission has a model ordinance for Construction Board of Appeals. And that's how the, that's how they set it out is started out on staggered shortened terms and then do five-year terms after that.
Okay. Any, any questions for Michael? Then we'll go to the mayor.
I have one, Mr. Chair. I'm not on your committee, but I've had a question.
We welcome your commission, your questions, Commissioner Lucas.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to ask how, what the legislation says about conflicts of interest. If the person serving has a conflict, how is that handled?
Good question.
Um, give, give me just a moment to find that in here. Um, that's, that's the main reason why we have alternate, um.
Okay.
Is so, um, let me see. Sorry, it's gonna take me just a moment.
Well, while Michael continues to, to look for that, uh, I can say in, in broad perspective, this is an appeals board and it doesn't function unless somebody has a problem with a decision made by our inspections and fees folks, uh, which we, we have, we have now, uh, uh, outsourced to SafeBill. So if somebody has a problem with a decision that SafeBill makes about you have to do something or you can't do something, you can appeal that decision to this appeals board. That's the whole, whole idea behind it. So you don't have a dictator in the position of a building or licensing, uh, group.
You found it, Michael?
Yes, sir. So this is section six dash eighty-eight of our code. It says, "No member shall participate in any discussion or hear any appeal in which that member or any person related within the third degree of consanguinity or affinity has any personal, professional, or financial interest."
So, yeah, if they had, if they had something, they couldn't participate. If they were working on the job or had somebody within the third degree that was related to them working on the job or doing, doing part of the work, subcontracting, et cetera.
Right.
Mike, I have a, Michael, for clarification, if that person does have a conflict, is on the appeal. Example, if one of the members of the appeal board had a project before that was being appealed.
Right.
They would have to step down under that provision and an alternate would take their place for the decision.
Right, and then the, the, so the board will select a chair and the chair, um, whoever they vote as the chair of the board would appoint one of the two alternates, um, to fill in for the person that has the conflict. And so if there's an alternate available that has the same qualifications, for example, you lose your electrical engineer and you've got an electrical engineer as an alternate, then that would be a natural choice to fill in for the purposes of that one appeal. But that's the board, the board chair make that choice between the two alternates.
That's good. I, I just, I knew there had to be something about that in there. I just wanted to hear it. Thank you.
Good question, thank you. So Mayor, if you don't have anything else to add, or Michael, then we'll go to, uh, to A.
All right, it, uh, two A, Mr. Chairman, uh, is, is we're, uh, nominating, uh, Warren Selby, uh, to post one. Everybody knows, but Warren is a general contractor, a design professional. We think he would do an excellent job and we, we recommend him, uh, for your confirmation.
Okay.
And I think, I think I saw him online. So if you've got a question for Warren, I think I saw him and, and I think he's tuned in and, and joining us. So Warren, are you there?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I'm here.
Good, thank you very much. So if you've got a question of Warren, he, he's online for you.
Warren, anything you want to say in particular? We, we all know you by good reputation and, and in the community. Anything you want to, any comments you want to make?
No, sir, just thank you for the opportunity. I served years ago, back when Elmo Richardson was actually chairman and I was vice chair. And it's a, it's a good board to have in place, as you've already discussed. That way people know that there's an appeals process if they don't agree with something that comes from the department.
I agree. Any questions for Warren Selby?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I would approve.
All right, we've got a motion to approve. And we got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Warren Selby is approved for post one of the Construction Board of Appeals.
Congratulations, Warren, or commiserations, as the, as the case might be.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate you willing to serve.
Next week.
All right, two B is a resolution appointing Krunal Patel to post three of the Construction Board of Appeals.
Actually, did you jump over B? I've got, I've got Bob Brown as B.
Uh, mine shows Krunal Patel. I, I don't have a post two on what I printed off, what I was saying. I've got post one, post two, post four, and post five.
I don't have a post.
I was wondering where number two went. Is number two Bob Brown?
Uh, yeah, number two is Bob Brown and, and I'm being told, I'm being told that he's the alternate for post one.
Post one and two.
Huh?
He's an alternate for post one.
So Bob, Bob Brown, Bob Brown, everybody knows Bob Brown. He's, uh, he's the alternate for post one.
Okay, are we voting on alternates as well? That's not in the, what we were saying, but.
And I'm not sure, I'm not sure that Bob is, is tuned in.
He's here.
Okay. Bob, are you here?
Yeah.
I am.
Okay. All right, any comments you want to make? If not, we'll, I'll see if anybody wants to ask you any questions.
Well, I just think it's a really important board. We find a lot of, uh, conditions in older buildings in the downtown area that require interpretation. That's why it is an important board to be on.
I agree. We've got old architecture here.
Voting to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve and a motion and a, and a second. Any questions for Bob?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I have a question for you when we get to it.
On relating to Bob Brown? On Bob Brown, Commissioner Bibbins?
Oh, no, 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 I'm, um, about this committee, I want to double check whether I'm on this one or not.
You are, you are Commissioner Bibbins.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Your honor. Okay, all in favor of Bob Brown being an alternate for post one and two, I think the mayor said. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Congratulations, Bob. We appreciate your expertise on the Construction Board of Appeals. And my sheet does not show, all it showed, mine shows post one, post three, post four, and post five. So is that all that was supposed to be on here?
I think that's correct.
Okay, I don't know, I don't know why we're not only voting on four. Maybe you just hadn't selected the other three, I guess.
Right, we're, we're waiting, waiting on confirmation of a couple of.
Okay.
Posts.
Okay. Two B then is resolution appointing Krunal Patel to post three of the Construction Board of Appeals.
Uh, Krunal Patel is a mechanical engineer, uh, was, uh, recommended to us, uh, and, and we think he would, uh, do, do well. Uh, Mr. Patel, are you on the line, sir?
Yes, sir, I'm on the line. Uh, I really appreciate you guys, uh, considering me for this post. And, uh, I agree with, uh, Mr. and, uh, Mr. Bob Brown that we can really help, uh, contractors and, uh, permitting processes in the event of conflicts with our knowledge, so.
And I understand Mr. Patel has fourteen years of mechanical engineering consulting experience and a registered engineer in the state of Georgia and Alabama.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Patel, we appreciate your expertise and we respect, uh, your great reputation. We appreciate you being willing to serve. Any questions for Mr. Patel?
Moving to approve.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Mr. Patel, you are, are elected and we appreciate your willingness to serve as well for post three.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Two C is resolution appointing Harold F. Spear to post four. I think he, I think that post was having to do with electrical.
Correct. And, and, and Mr. Spear is an electrical engineer. He runs Spear and Associates Electrical Contractors.
Right. Mr. Spear, are you here? Mr. Spear, I don't guess he's here. But I think he's a good choice as well, good rep, reputation.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr.
I, I, I do not know why he, he is not here. I believe the invitation was sent, but, um, in the past, you've allowed us to have them at pre-commission on next week. Uh, if we can arrange that, would you allow us to, uh, have him at pre-commission? And you can vote on him at the regular commission meeting on next Tuesday night.
Right, or, or we could approve him subject to his appearance, uh.
All right.
That's, that's what I.
I like the second part, Mr. Chairman. We're going to approve him subject to his appearance. I make a motion for that.
A second.
Commissioner Allen's got the motion, Commissioner Schlesinger seconds it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, uh, Mr. Harold F. Spear, subject to his, uh, appearance at next Tuesday's pre-commission. Two D is resolution appointing Stephen V. Scalco to post five of the Construction Board of Appeals. You think you want to add to that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Uh, Steve, no stranger to a lot of folks. And in fact, I think he worked for us for a number of years, uh, in the past. Uh, he's a cert, certified professional engineer and I think would, uh, do, do a great job. Steve, are you on the line?
Uh, yes, I am, Mayor.
Oh, excellent, thank you very much for being here. Uh, uh, how long did you work, uh, uh, as a building inspector for us?
Uh, I, I actually worked for the ci- city and county for tw- uh, twelve years. Eight and a, eight and a half of the years I was served as the director of the Building Inspection Department.
Uh-huh. I think he'd be a great choice.
Well, well, I do want to acknowledge, I, I thank y'all for considering me. I'm more than glad to serve. Uh, I bring to the table both experience as the building official, as a former building official, and also as a consulting engineer. I agree with my, uh, compatriots that pointed out to y'all the importance of this board. Uh, I had the Board of Appeals in place when I was the building official. It serves a very important function, sometimes where there wants to be further discussion that's beyond what the building official may do and it allows professionals to offer additional considerations when, uh, when an appellate feels like the building official's interpretation may be, uh, may need to be modified. Um, and so I thank y'all for the opportunity to be of service.
Make a motion to approve, Steve Scalco, he's a good man.
Second.
Got a motion to second, Steve, aren't you a Georgia Tech grad?
Yes, yes, I am.
Don't look, don't make him lose points, though.
That gains, gains points. I'm a big Georgia Tech fan, but that's where my brother graduated from school. So I, I, I thought you were. Any other questions for Mr. Steve Scalco?
I, I have one comment. I have one comment.
Yes, ma'am.
That is, in this day and time, it is very difficult to, uh, see a board made up entirely of men.
When, when we got an alternate lined up, we just couldn't get it here today.
Well, what, um, do you, do you really?
Keisha Stafford from Stafford Construction.
All right. But I mean, just for future, uh, there shouldn't ever be any boards or authorities because you're saying that your moms, your aunts, your daughters aren't worthy and there are none out there. So y'all, please, let's not make those mistakes, those kind of.
And Mr. Chairman, if you.
But I love all you guys. I don't, I'm married to a guy, so.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if you would, if we, if we could have those other, uh, uh, two people information before you for pre-commission, we would try to submit it at the same time.
And, and, and I'm being told, uh, Dr. Moffett, that Keisha, uh, Stafford is on the line. Uh, will, is Keisha, are you there?
I am, I'm here. How are you, Mr. Mayor?
I'm fine, Keisha, we appreciate that. We, 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 we were wait, we were waiting for one final. I think we're waiting for a resume, uh, from background check, background check on Keisha. Uh, so we just couldn't quite get that done by today, but maybe we can supplement that, uh, and have her ready for you at pre-commission.
No problem. Thank you, uh, Commissioner Luke.
All right, yeah. And, and I'm being told that our other post, Scott Piffin, uh, and Scott, are you on there?
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm here on audio.
Good, excellent, well, we appreciate you. We're, we're just trying to finalize yours and tell us a little bit, uh, uh, about your background, your experience and why you're willing to serve and want to serve on the, on the appeals board, Construction Appeal Board. As post two.
Yeah, I'm a, a structural engineer, uh, PE registered in the states of Georgia and Florida. I'm a Georgia Tech graduate, uh, nineteen eighty-eight. So I've been, so I've been doing this about, uh, thirty years and I'm currently the, uh. So I've been doing this about thirty years, and I'm currently the, the president and principal engineer of Pytech, which is a structural engineering firm that was founded here in Macon in nineteen ninety-eight. We employ ten people here in Macon and four down on the coast in a Brunswick, Georgia office. So I've been doing this a while, and again, I think this is a very important board, and I'm, I'm glad to see the structure that's being put in place for the inspection, plan review process in Macon. And again, particularly, I think Bob Brown mentioned it, with our older buildings, it brings up some very unique situations, and I've got a lot of experience in those areas, and I think I can bring an open mind to interpreting some of the unique code situations that arise when you're renovating older buildings.
And Mr. Chairman Scott would be post two.
Are we voting on him today or he's for pre-commission?
Well, we don't, we don't, we didn't quite have his resume, application, background check completed for you, but we can probably get that done before next Tuesday. So if you wanted to do, approve him today, subject to having it finalized for next Tuesday, we'll be happy to do that. That way you'd have, you'd, your board, because Keisha's in the same boat.
Mr. Mayor, why couldn't we not do both of them?
Both of them today if, if that's the rest of the committee.
Why don't you take a motion, why don't you take a motion and add that to your agenda post, post two and alternate, and, and add those to your agenda, and then I think you could do that, sir.
Yes, sir, I will do that. I appreciate your help, Mr. Mayor. So.
Make a motion, do we do that, Mr. Chairman?
All right, we're gonna add.
Add both of them.
We're gonna add, uh, Mr. Scott. Keisha Stafford and Scott Pitkins.
Yes.
Okay, we got a motion to add both of those two.
I'll second.
Background check and final approval, pre-commission next week.
Next week, right.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a second by Commissioner Schlesinger. Any further comments or questions? Both of these are highly qualified people. I know Scott has a tremendous reputation. Pytech, another good Georgia Tech man, so maybe we'll get a new Georgia Tech woman here pretty soon. But the rest of the cavalry's not here, Commissioner Lucas, so they're coming. All, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, you, Keisha and Scott are both approved. We appreciate both of you being willing to serve. This is a very important board and appreciated by the community very much.
Chairman, we'll have the resolution for, for those two, and those two and the background checks completed for next Tuesday, so.
So that takes you back to Steve Scalco, who, who you need, you need a vote on. I don't think you got a vote on him.
That's right.
You had a motion and a second, but you didn't vote.
Mayor's giving me straight here. Okay.
I'm trying.
All right, so we, do I have a motion?
You do have a motion and a second for Steve Scalco.
Second, all right, so all in favor of Steve Scalco?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those, uh, Steve Scalco is approved as well. So Steve, we appreciate your willingness to serve and got some great qualified people on there thus far. That's, so that's six of the seven, I think, potentially, with final approval next week. So I think that concludes the appointments to boards, commissions. Next, number three is the C D B G funds from Juanzina Jackson, Director of Economic Community Development.
Mr. Chairman, unfortunately. That'd be your next committee, I think.
Yeah, unfortunately, when that printed on Friday, that got placed in the wrong place, but the updated version has it in community economic development.
Well, that's, I was wondering why it was there, but it's, it print out that way. Okay. I think that, anybody else have anything, facilities and engineering?
Mr. Chair, I wanted to ask the county manager for an update on Jeffersonville Road, because I've been getting calls and people, I know the weather has been a problem, but a lot of people are calling saying, you know, where are we? So if you could.
Yes, ma'am. I contacted an engineer after we spoke on yesterday for him to give me an update. He has not replied as of yet. He was going to contact G dot. But you asked me for that update and an update on the L mig and the road resurfacing. So he is working on those two things, and as soon as I get them, I will email them to you and ask them to be put on the committee for an official update for the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you give us that next Tuesday, Keith?
That, that would be my goal.
Okay.
Okay, one last thing is the drainage issues in South Bib and in Kings, not, um, uh, not Kings, um, Park.
Now, Chris Wood.
Yeah, um, those drainage issues.
Well, yes, ma'am. Well, each, well, each issue you, that I've received over the last two weeks, I did have engineering and public works investigate them individually. Let's take them in separate. The, the one that causes, that caused the most, um, issue was the drainage from about two weeks ago. We had an enormous amount of rain. It rained about five inches in about an hour, which caused spear flooding over in South Bib. We had several residents that we had to assist that night. The fire department actually went out and helped them out of their homes and things of that nature. They did go out and, and, and investigate the retention pond there and found no blockage, no issue. The system worked as it was designed to work. But there has been several questions about the history of that area. I did have the county attorney do some investigation on that to see if we were, the county was liable anyway, and we are not. The retention pond and that drainage system was designed over thirty years ago, and it is working as it was designed. So unfortunately, it really just was an enormous amount of rain that overflowed that system.
Okay, and the property owners have been told all this?
Yes, ma'am. Every property owner that contacted us, we did, uh, we did talk to. I understand they were not pleased, they were not happy.
I'm sure.
But again, uh, the, and, and some of that system is, is on private property. So the, the, the parts that own private property, we not, we're not responsible for, nor do we make, when I say not responsible for, we do not maintain. And so that has been an issue also, but from time to time, we have gone out and cleaned it. We do know that it does clog up, so we have done that. Those pieces that own private property, we're not, we're not responsible or liable for.
Okay, and we don't assume ownership if we go out of years and clean?
Well, no, ma'am, that's been one of those sticky issues that, you know, you, you go out and you do courtesy issue sometime, and that makes people feel that we have ownership, but we have not accepted ownership of those, of, of parts of that system as its own private property. Michael, I don't want to put you on the spot, but is that, am I saying that correctly?
Right, so the, the issue with assuming ownership has to do with if there's a failure of the drainage system itself, or if there's a, a, a maintenance, a lack of appropriate maintenance being done to the drainage system. In this case, every indication is, and it's just worked as intended, that there was no, there was no improper maintenance, there was no improper functioning. It just got overwhelmed because of the volume of rain. And so the, the question, it's our, it's our retention pond, and it's our ditches for, for most of it, but it all functioned properly. So the question of, of ownership isn't, isn't really part of the analysis, and that's.
That's right.
Okay, I just wanted us to say something in response to, because there were quite a few people on the east side and on south side who had those kinds of problems, so I just wanted.
The issue on the east side that you notified me of, we did go out and clean that, that, that area, so that should take care of that problem. My understanding that there were no homes affected in that area, it's just that it was a, a couple of ditches that the, the homeowners notified us that were overflowing. So Public Works did go out and address those areas over in the, I think it is the King Park area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, I'll go ahead, but go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Allen.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, the question I have is from the ninety-four flood, where we had all the issues out there. We understand people did. Some people had flood insurance, other people did not. But since that time, they are not required to have flood insurance out there, because what we did out there with the retention pond from the school system, we're up on Scupper Road as well as back down toward Hurd. My question is, do we have a responsibility upon ourselves to contact the insurance companies and let them know that, you know, they, they should offer flood insurance, because if this has happened in this number of years, and it's continuing to happen, should we try to assist them in letting the insurance companies know that this is a flood danger?
I would, I would think that would be up to the individual homeowner to contact their insurance carrier and say, I need flood insurance. That would be my thought, but Duke, you any thoughts on that?
There's nothing, certainly that I would imagine the homeowners should and can talk to their agents about that, but I've got no objection to us contacting any insurance company that we are aware of that might have coverages out there, just inquiring about it, but it's not our responsibility, to your point, that we.
Yeah, my thing is just trying to help, to help the citizens of this county.
No, I understand that, and, and what I would advise is that anybody living in that area or any other flood plain, for that matter, in Bib County, is to make sure they do contact their agent as part of your homeowner's coverage, but you've got to pay for it separately. And talk to the agent about flood insurance. A lot of people don't think about that, because they may not even know they're in a flood zone.
Yeah.
I would, that's good practice anyway. So anybody that thinks they're in that area or any other area they think is in a flood zone, do need to talk to their agent about flood insurance. Because your point, Mr. Allen, some of these, my understanding at least, is some of these residents just didn't, didn't have the insurance that would have paid for this image.
Yeah, there was one property owner right there that got flooded out in ninety-four when I was commissioner for the old county, and yet again, they're reflooded out. They said everything was fine since we put the retention ponds in. And I was on that committee at that time, and we, of course, this is the first time we've had that since then. So, you know, it's, it's really, it's kind of heart wrenching when people lose everything they have.
Yeah, in today's real estate process, going through, when you're getting a loan, it is determined that whether you're in the flood zone or not in a flood zone. And if, if that's the case, then flood insurance is required. And of course, all that changed in ninety-four with the big flood. And I did, Keith, I did talk to Tim Wilder, Director of Public Works, and, and, and found out exactly what Michael said, that that is our retention pond. And I saw him on the, and he contacted me back and said that it was working like it was supposed to work, but it's still hard for me to, and I know it's, you know, flat as a pancake out there in that area, but it's just hard for me to imagine that four or five inches of rain could flood several houses, like a couple of feet of water. It's just hard, hard to imagine, but I guess that's what it did. I'm, I'm no engineer.
Yeah.
I feel for those folks.
Yeah.
And they did contact me as well. They reached out to all the commissioners. So, anyway, anybody have anything else for, on facilities? If not, we're hereby adjourned.
Good, thank you, Chairman Jones. So Warren Selby, thank you very much. If, if y'all want to drop off now, Bob Brown, we appreciate you being with us. Mr. Patel, thank you very much, sir. Harold Spear, we'll try to get on, online for you on Tuesday. And then Steve Scalco, thank you for being here. Scott Pippen, thank you. And Keisha, thank you. If y'all want to drop off now, although you're welcome to stay on and, and, and watch. This is good entertainment for the next committee meeting. But if you want to go now, now's the time that you can go.
The Selby could hang and give us a brief update on Dolores Brooks.
Uh-oh, stars.
I mean, it'll just be a brief.
You didn't drop, you didn't drop off quick enough.
Not quickly enough, we got it.
All right, well, having, having said that, the next committee meeting, the Economic and Community Development, that's Chairman Elaine Lucas, and members of her committee, Larry Schlesinger, Bert Bibbin, Scotty Shepherd, and Virgil Watkins. I do not think that Scotty Shepherd ever signed on, so you've got four, and that's your quorum, so Chairman Lucas?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow commissioners. We'll go ahead and call this meeting of Economic and Community Development to order. And we'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes. Um, did we get a second?
Second.
It's been motion and second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Watkins, would you unmute, please? All right, item two is appointment to authorities, boards, and commissions. A resolution submitting John Hauser, Steve Kruger, and Eric Manson as a slate of nominees to succeed Patricia Robinson on the Macon Bib County Hospital Authority Board. Mr. Mayor, would you go through the process and why we have three nominees? It's kind of an unusual setup.
It is a little bit of an unusual setup, and I really ought to call on the county attorney and, and see if either Duke or Michael can do this. My impression is that this is one of those things where, where we formulate a slate of three people and send it over to the, the hospital authority. They have to select one from the, the panel. If they reject all three, then we have to formulate a second panel of three and send that over. And they, the hospital authority must select somebody from the second panel. So we try to do a good job of selecting a, a, a good group of people for the first group. And John Hauser, Steve Kruger, and Eric Manson are well-known to a lot of us. We think they would serve well and, and do the good balancing act between the interest of the county and, and the medical center.
Uh, now, doesn't the hospital authority send us the names?
They do, they, they, they make recommendations, but, but like I say, it's up to us to formulate a, a slate of three, and then they select from the slate of three. So, yeah, even though they make recommendations, that's not binding on us, and, and we, we, we come up with the slate for you.
Okay, so we have chosen to, to accept these, these, this slate. So we'll entertain a motion on this.
Motion.
Second.
All right, it's been motion and second to approve this resolution submitting these three names to replace Patricia Robinson on Macon Bib County Hospital Authority. Any further discussion on this? If not, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did I lose my committee? I, where are they? We've got Lucas, oh, there are only four of us, that's what it is. All right, so we recommend approval of that. A, a third item is renaming of Dempsey Park is Carolyn Creighton Cherry Blossom Park. And this is sponsored, co-sponsored by Commissioners Larry Schlesinger and Virgil Watkins. Let's go ahead and entertain a motion.
All right, move to approve.
Second.
Been motion and second, discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Wynn.
Thank you. I think it's high time that we've done something to honor Carolyn Creighton, our community. Let, let me just talk a little bit about this, if I may. I'm not on this committee, so I don't vote on this. But first of all, I had a question about renaming Dempsey Park. Dempsey Park is associated with the Dempsey Hotel. Many of us know the Dempsey Park as Third Street Park. I don't know why we call it Third Street when it's supposed to be Dempsey Park. Never knew that. I guess the history is, is behind there somewhere, but I would assume it's associated with whoever Dempsey was for the Dempsey Hotel. Secondly, you know, when Carolyn Creighton came to this community, she was, she got very involved right away. She formed the Macon, Keep Macon Bib Beautiful Committee, and that was in committees that were all over the country, and she brought one to Macon and started that. Secondly, after she got here, she did that, and she got with Mr. Fickling, William Fickling, and saw these beautiful cherry trees we have. And the cherry trees, she thought, would make a good, I guess, background for a festival. In nineteen eighty-two, she proposed the Cherry Blossom Festival, as you may all recall. And that festival has grown from a three-day festival to a ten-day festival every year in Central City Park. It is the main, main attraction at Central City Park ever since Georgia State Fair left the Central City Park. I think that she is probably the best ambassador for the city of Macon that I've ever known. You know, right now, I looked this up, the Cherry Blossom Festival, if you, you talk about. You know, right now, I looked this up, the Cherry Blossom Festival, if you, you talk about Macon, most people know Macon for the Cherry Blossom Festival. Visit Macon talks about that. It's one of the top 20 events in the South. It is one of the top 50 events in the United States, and it's one of the top 100 events in the, in North America. So Carolyn Creighton has brought a lot to the city of Macon. She's been one of the best ambassadors to this city that I have known in my lifetime of being here, my whole lifetime. She's put the city of Macon on the map. She's given us, not only does the Cherry Blossom Festival put us on the map, it brings, it brings in revenue to the city. It brings in people to the city. And it brings in activities to the city that we would not normally have. Most of these activities, just about all of them, for 10 days, are at Central City Park. So the point I'm getting to here is that this is really a lady that's done a lot more and deserves a lot from us. I hate to see us rename a park that has a name. So my suggestion to your committee is to amend this resolution to make Central City Park in name of Carolyn Creighton City Park. I think that would be a much better honor to her. It's more appropriate for what she's done for this community and what she, the legacy she will leave to this community. It is appropriate for that park to be named after her because the events of that Cherry Blossom Festival that she started 38 years ago is the biggest event we have there.
Madam Chairman, this is Al Tillman, Madam Chairman.
Mr. Tillman?
With all due, with all due respect, Commissioner Nguyen, you, you're talking to us as though you're talking to out of towners. We all know Ms. Creighton well.
Right.
And we would be honored to name anything in her honor. My question to you, Commissioner Nguyen, have you spoken to Ms. Creighton about naming a Central City Park in her honor? Because I think we would, you know, look at something else that would be more fitting for her and what her family would want. So that would be my only suggestion before we talk about naming a Central City Park.
In response to that.
Okay, hold on a second. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. The sponsors, what are your thoughts on, on this?
Well, let me go first because I'll give a little background. I was approached with the request that we rename Third Street Park in honor of Carolyn Creighton and the Cherry Blossom Festival, which I thought was a great idea. And because it's so, some, it's, it's in the heart of downtown, and so many of the activities during the festival are in that immediate area. So I, you know, we drew up legislation to do exactly that, but we also found out that there is a history here. So I'm going to ask Michael McNeil to sort of tell us what that, you know, process was and what we found, because I don't think anybody recognized that Third Street Park wasn't simply just Third Street Park. So Michael, if you'll, if you'll talk about that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, so what we found was in 1914, the City of Macon City Council formed a park naming commission to name all of the parks downtown that run like down Poplar Street, on Third Street, and down Mulberry Street. And the portion of Third Street Park that runs from Poplar to Cherry was named Dunlap Park after a Captain Dunlap who served in the Confederate Army as a scout captain. And he was the one that essentially saw the Union troops coming to Macon and saved Macon from seas.
Remind, could you say again which park was named after the Confederate?
This is, this is Dunlap Park from, on Third Street, from Poplar to Cherry.
Third Poplar to Cherry needs to be renamed. All right.
From Cherry to Mulberry, it's called Dempsey Park, and this is named after Thomas Dempsey. I found a history book that talked about Thomas Dempsey as a prominent citizen and capitalist. He served on the, the first board of education that was formed in Bibb County in 1872, and he was a Bibb County Commissioner in 1873. And he, he died in 1899. He was 85 years old. And his widow, who was about 50 years younger than him, inherited his estate of a million dollars, which is about $31 million today. And with that money, she was able to, to develop a lot of land and property in Macon. She donated the land that was used for the Dempsey Hotel. And that was built as a, as a general, as a civic pride project because it was not, not seen as something that would get money back for the city, but it was something that a lot of people thought we needed a hotel downtown. And so they did in honor of either Lillian or Thomas Dempsey or both. And then he was also listed in the U.S. Congressional Record as a benefactor of Pianono College in the 1870s that stood where the Stanislaus neighborhood is now, Pineville. And so that's, that's what I could find about Thomas Dempsey. And the park was named after him in 1914, along with, like I said, about 10 other parks around the downtown area.
That's very interesting. All of that is very interesting.
Right. I, I wonder, also, I don't know that the park was actually named, but there is a sign that has been put in this particular park, what I'll call the Third Street Median Park, for Mr. William Arthur Fickling, Sr. There's a big plaque about how he started the Cherry Blossom Festival and the cherry trees, this, that, or the other. I, I would suggest an amendment, but not going to Central City Park because I think Third Street Park is a great park to name. I would just insert the word "also", so that in the "now therefore", this reads now therefore be resolved that by the Macon-Bibb County Commission is hereby so resolved by the authority of the same that Dempsey Park shall hereby and henceforth be also named. Just, just insert "also" named Carolyn Creighton Cherry Blossom Park, because the cherry trees have been planted there, I'm confident, since Carolyn Creighton and the Cherry Blossom Festival were started. So be also, also named Cherry Blossom, an appropriate signage, so that you would put a sign there, kind of like for William Arthur Fickling. And I think that would be a great tribute to have both of them there. And I think with just that one word addition, be also named, so you're not eliminating the name Dempsey. You're just also naming it for the Carolyn Creighton Cherry Blossom Park.
Okay, sponsors?
You know, I have no problem with that. In order to really, you know, follow through with the request that, that was made, we felt that that was going to be the, excuse me. We felt that the Dempsey name was always going to be there because of the, the hotel, the apartment complex, which is, which is there. I mean, when you talk about, you know, the Dempsey, everybody knows we're talking about the, the building itself. So, I mean, I don't have a, I, I really don't have a problem with introducing "also". This happens to be in, in Ward Eight, which is Commissioner Watkins' district. So I, I would like to name it specifically after Carolyn and the Cherry Blossom Festival, but I am not opposed to putting "also" in there. But it's Commissioner Watkins' district, and I like to hear what he has to say.
Okay. You don't have a problem, Commissioner Watkins?
I, I think if you're going to name the park, we need to pick a name. Either we're going to leave it named, that we know it's the Dempsey Park, or we're going to leave it named Dempsey Park, or we're going to name it Creighton. I don't know if the, the hyphenated helps anything. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, if that's what y'all want to do. You know, we, I'm not opposed to renaming the Confederate Park or anything else. I mean, if we're going to re, if we're renaming parks, which is what you do unfortunately, I guess, every century or so, different cultures and histories have arisen, and as a focus area. But yeah, I know historically, that's what we do, that we eat ice cream and celebrate cherry blossom and do a lot of stuff in that area. So it makes sense to me. I don't know.
Right. And, and that, that plaque that the mayor was talking about to William Fickling is there. And, you know, he was very instrumental in the planting of the cherry trees here and what resulted in, in terms of the Cherry Blossom Festival as well. And the cherry trees are there, and that's why we felt that this was an appropriate place. And the Dempsey name will still be there with, with, with the building itself. Nobody, nobody that I know has ever referred to that strip as Dempsey Park.
Okay, so you two, the two sponsors are, are in agreement on adding the "also" manner of agreement?
If, if, if that's going to be what it takes to do this, then, then yes, again.
Yeah, because we don't need to have any kind of lingering kind of thing on this. This, we're all in agreement to do it. It's just the mechanism. And the mayor has proposed a way of doing it, which will be just as grand, and the ceremony and all of that will follow. I, I don't know whether Commissioner Jones was first or Nguyen.
I'll let Commissioner Jones go first, but I do want to speak, so please let me have another word.
Okay, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, Madam Chairman. I, I think you, I tend to agree with Commissioner Nguyen. I'm certainly not going to vote against anything to honor Carolyn Creighton. And she is our greatest ambassador since I've been here for 50 years. She's done a tremendous amount for this community, and we're known internationally because of the, spoke about, that everyone seems to know all that. I doubt that everybody knew that it was one of the top 100 events in North America. But if you do, I'm glad, I'm glad you knew that. But I think the Central City Park, which is a generic name, Central City, is not, it doesn't take away from any one person because it wasn't named after a person, to me. And because all those activities are there, 90% of them or more, that it makes perfect sense. Again, I'm not going to vote against another area because we want to honor Carolyn Creighton. And I, she would be thrilled either way. Wouldn't say anything either way. She's that type of person. But I think it's much more appropriate to name Central City. The other one's already named, so you're taking away or diluting from those people who were named in honor of that park, even though we, we weren't as familiar with it as, as, because it's a long time ago in history. But I like the Central City Park idea. I think that's more appropriate. Thank you.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, and Commissioner Jones said the one thing I was going to say, that that Central City Park is a generic name. It doesn't have, that park doesn't have a name. The most appropriate use of that park now, the best use is, is the Cherry Blossom Festival. And to say that the events occur on the Third Street Dempsey Park, they don't. They have the ice cream giveaway for lunch during those times. But the main events, all those 10 days, the money that comes in, the people that come in, they go to Central City Park. Central City Park. And if you look in Savannah and other places like Atlanta, all their parks are named after someone of relevance to their community. And I can't think of a better person in our community than Carolyn Creighton. She has been the ambassador through the 38 years this festival has been here. And it's grown and grown and grown and brought a lot of revenue, or losing revenue this year from, from that event not being there. But to have her name on a park that's a generic name, we're not taking away from the Dempsey Park or Mr. Fickling, William Fickling's name that's, there's, as you said, there's something in that park already, in Dempsey Park for Mr. Fickling. So we're adding another name. I would hate to think in 60, 70, 100 years from now, people want to come in and rename places like our fire departments that are named after some of the commissioners or some of our other facilities and buildings in our, 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 our community that are named after other people. So you know, there's a lot of places in Macon that have names, and we don't want those to be named or put "also" because we have other people that are coming, come in and, I think, I think we need to make Central City Park the park named after Carolyn Creighton because that park really has all the cherry blossom offense there. We no longer have the Georgia State Fair that comes there. It is our main park that has no name. And we will not be stepping on anybody's name or history by naming it after her.
All right, Mr. Mayor?
Just to add, not only do you have the cherry blossom trees that have been planted along Third Street, you also have the lantern, the stone lantern that YKK presented to Macon. And that's a, a big part of the Cherry Blossom Festival where they have the lantern lighting every year. It's a big, it's a big deal to have all of that together. There's a memorial plaque down there with the lantern about the gift from YKK and the sister city relationship. So like I say, I, I, I think Third Street downtown is a more appropriate location, and I don't think it does any disrespect to the Thomas C. Dempsey to also name it Carolyn Creighton Cherry Blossom Park. Thank you.
All right. Now, we're going back to the sponsors, Commissioner Watkins, and we're going to-
If the, if the urge is to move it to the Central City Park, I would urge us to maybe table for research because we just learned in 1914 there was a committee established to name all the parks. So we, and before this started, without Third Street was something, so just, I see Duke raising his hands.
Okay, county attorney?
I, I think that's why as Commissioner Watkins and Madam Chair, we can't really do an amendment to this one. That would be out of order because it's a totally different situation. So I think we should table this if this is the will of the committee and get more research on Central City.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion?
Motion to table.
Commissioner Bivin?
Yeah, I, I'll second if appropriate.
Okay, it's been motion and second that we tabled this, and that will give time for discussion and some research and everything. And then in, in two weeks, have it back on the agenda for some action then. Okay, and everybody watching will know that this is not anything negative concerning Ms. Creighton. It's just to kind of work it and come out with the best possible solution. All right, all in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so this one, this is tabled?
Right.
Did you have anything else?
I'll get our, I'll get our resident historian, Michael McNeil, to look into the-
Yeah, yeah. That was great research. I like that, that history. All right, so that takes care of that. One other item I wanted to mention was that Dr. Betty Talbert, who founded Progressive Christian Academy, she is in ill health. Most of you who know Dr. Talbert know that she is just a grand lady and has done so much in the community, just a wonderful educator. She is in kind of ill health, but the legal department is working on the resolution to designate Wise Avenue, the small park there, as the Dr. Betty Talbert Park. It's right there at the previous location of Progressive Christian Academy. And so I welcome co-sponsors to that, that resolution when it's ready. All right, can we go ahead and let Mr. Selby give us kind of an update on Dolores Brooks Park, just a quick update? And, and then we will go to our smiling ECD director, Ms. Jackson, for her update, for her report.
Yes, ma'am. We have completed work at Dolores Brooks. We completed our work back in December, which included the front addition, interior renovations, and some outside work around the ballparks. I know that there has been some ongoing work out there, but I would have to defer to Mr. Murphy or Robert Walker to maybe update on any of the other items, but we are complete. And that's, that's where we are at this point.
Okay, tell us briefly what you did that's made such a difference.
Well, on the front of the building, we added a new entrance lobby. There's a handicap accessibility entrance to the building. When you first drive up to the building, there's, like I say, a handicap entrance, new steps. You come in, front lobby, you then go into the building. Once you go in the building, we renovated- Once you go in the building, we renovated the bathrooms, we renovated most all of the spaces inside the building. You may recall, we actually went back into the gymnasium and did some painting as well to freshen up the gym. So pretty much all of the interior space had some work completed. We then put in a new slide over at the pool, the pool area, we did that work. And then we built a small pavilion. If you're facing the building, when you come up to the left, there's a new pavilion there on the left-hand side. And then we built a new concession stand that is placed just right, I believe. I know we had your input on where to have that concession stand located. So that once you're inside the concession stand, you can look out and see your kids playing ball. Although that was a real important part of the location of that. So we moved it around a little bit. And then there were some drainage issues on one of the ballparks we completed there as well. So that pretty much, I'm sorry, playground, we put in a new handicap accessible swing set, which is really nice, which is on the back of the building as well, right? Not too far from the basketball court, which we resurfaced. And then we also resurfaced the tennis court. So there was a good bit of completed and it's ready to be, once summer's here and people are able to, you're able to open the facility. I think it's ready to go.
Yeah, and the entrance to it, whereas nothing had been done, it was dangerous. Car, one car, there was just enough room, one car to go out, just one car. And so it's now safer because there are several lanes there.
Yes, ma'am, you're right. I'm sorry, I forgot about that. When you come all the way out to the street, we actually reworked the entrance way like you just described and coordinated and worked with DOT, so that part has been completed. And actually, as you mentioned about traffic flow, we reworked it, the front entrance as well. We reworked a little bit of the drive at the front where you can drop off and so forth. So it's a much better flow, you are correct, out there now. So nice to hear that.
All right, and we appreciate all your work. You always do an excellent job on what you do. So anybody else have any questions about Dolores Brooks Park? All right, if not, thank you for staying around and giving us that.
Good to see y'all, thank you.
All right, does anybody have any update on Rosa Park Square?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Yes, the Rosa Park Board is moving forward with an RFQ to hire an engineering firm to produce a bid set of documents to price the improvement that the Macon Bill Commission has approved. This will allow the board to come to complete a phased budget approach for the improvements. The discussion so far has been how to use the $74,000 to pay for this service. So the holdup has been, I want to make sure I say this correctly, been waiting on the committee to tell us how they would like us to move forward. And so, well, they met last week and they decided to go ahead and do an RFQ to hire an engineer firm to produce the architectural designs that where we can go ahead and do the budget to make the improvements.
All right, that's great, because this commission has voiced its support for the work. And so now that committee has to really pull together and decide what they want as their first step. So thank you so much. The last thing on our agenda, last item is the ECD report, which is going to be given by Ms. Juanzina Jackson, who is the Director of the ECD Department. Welcome.
Thank you, good morning. Rachel Gamble is actually going to assist me this morning by doing the PowerPoint presentation. And she is bringing that up as we speak.
I'm pulling it up now. I'm going to make it full screen so everyone will be able to see it at home.
And thank you so much for your assistance, Rachel.
You are quite welcome, ma'am.
So this morning, as we move to the next slide, is that we're going to talk a little bit about the funding that will be discussed today will be appropriated through the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act, also known as the CARES Act. For those that may not know, the CARES Act is a law meant to address the economic fallout of the 2020 coronavirus pandemic in the United States. As we move to the next slide, we're going to talk a little bit about the CARES Act and what the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development has done. It's actually announced an allocation of the first $2 billion in CARES Act funding for community development block grant grantees, as well as $1 million for emergency solutions grant grantees based on the fiscal year 2020 grant formula. As we move to the next slide, the first program that I will talk about will be the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Funds, also known as CDBG CB. These are special funds that must be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus pandemic, also known as COVID-19.
Okay, Ms. Jackson, this money is different from the pot of money that we were talking about earlier, isn't it? Remember, our finance folks were telling us, Keith, about the monies that are coming to the state?
Yes, ma'am.
That's cities and counties, but this is a different pot of money.
Yes, ma'am. Yes. Go ahead, one minute.
Oh, so for these particular funds, these are direct allocations. So it's allocated just like our community development block grant funds are, as well as our emergency solutions grant. So for our particular community, what we've been allocated is $1,118,535. As we move to the next slide, we're going to talk about, a little bit about what some of the eligible activities are. The first category that we have on this particular slide talks about building and improvements to include prevalent facilities to establish an infectious disease treatment clinic. Some of those things that can be included in this particular category is to construct a facility for testing, for diagnoses as well as for treatment, to rehabilitate a community facility to establish an infectious disease treatment. Also, it could be to acquire and rehabilitate or construct a group living facility that may be used to centralize patients undergoing treatments, as well as make interim improvements to private properties to enable an individual patient to remain quarantined on a temporary basis. With this particular category, you could also look at to rehabilitate a commercial building or closed school building to establish an infectious disease treatment clinic. Some of those repairs could possibly be in the rehabilitation by replacing the HVAC system. Last in this particular category is to acquire and quickly rehabilitate, if necessary, a motel or hotel building to expand capacity for hospitals to accommodate isolation of patients during the recovery. As we move to the next slide, we'll also move to the next category that is actually eligible up under these funds, which deals with to provide provision of new or qualifiably increased public services. So this is our social service category. Some of the things that are included in this section will be carry out job training to expand the pool of healthcare workers and technicians that are available to treat disease within our community, as well as to provide testing, diagnosis, or other services at a fixed or mobile location, increase the capacity of availability of targeted health services for infectious diseases, response with existing health facilities. And it also may include provide equipment, supplies, materials necessary to carry out a public service. And lastly, it also talks about the possibility of the delivery of meals on wheels to quarantine individuals or individuals that need to maintain social distancing due to medical vulnerabilities. The next category, as we move to the next slide, actually talks about the provision for economic development. With the provision for economic development, it includes these items. Provide grants or loans to support new businesses or business expansion to create jobs and manufacture medical supplies necessary to respond to infectious disease. Avoid job loss caused by business closures related to social distancing by providing short-term work capital assistance to small businesses to enable retention of jobs held by low and moderate income persons. The last section up under this category is provide technical assistance, grants, loans, and other financial assistance to establish, stabilize, and expand microenterprises that provide medical, food delivery, cleaning, and other services to support home health quarantine. Those are some of the eligible costs of one of the various categories. Now we'll move to the next slide that talks about a few of the ineligible activities up under this particular funding source. One of them would be buildings for the general conduct of government, general government expenses such as maintenance, repair, operating costs, et cetera, political and religious activities, as well as fine penalties, late fees, and tax. Next slide, which talks a little bit about the Emergency Solutions Grant Coronavirus Funds, also known as ESG CB. These are special funds that must be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus pandemic among individuals and families who are homeless or receiving homeless assistance, and to support additional homeless assistance and homelessness prevention activities to mitigate the impact of COVID-19.
Is that in addition to the million, the previous million dollars?
This is actually emergency solutions grants. And these particular funds are specifically for those individuals that are at risk of homelessness or that are currently homeless. And so for these particular funds, Macon-Biv County has actually been allocated $565,638. And on the next few slides, I'll talk a little bit about what is actually eligible up under this particular funding source. This one deals with rapid rehousing eligible costs. This deals with rental assistance, which could also include the rental arrears. It also includes financial assistance, which deals with rental application fees, also security and utility deposits, utility payments, last month's rent, as well as moving costs. Some of the services up under this category that are actually eligible are housing search and placement, as well as housing stability, case management, landlord-tenant mediation, tenant legal service, as well as credit repair. The next category that we have is actually homeless prevention, which is on our next slide. With homeless prevention, it provides some of the same eligible categories as far as rental assistance. This would include rental arrears, as well as the financial assistance, which includes rental application fees, as well as security and utility deposits, utility payments, last month's rent, and moving costs. Some of those services that are eligible up under this particular category are going to be housing service and placement, housing stability, case management, landlord-tenant mediation, tenant legal services, as well as credit repair. Our next slide that we will move into deals with emergency shelter eligible costs. So with the emergency shelter eligible costs up under this particular grant, some of this, it will include supplies as far as cleaning supplies, protective equipment for program participants such as bed linens, towels, hand sanitizers, as well as soap, et cetera. And then some of the furnishings that you can actually purchase would be cots, as well as room dividers. The equipment category could possibly be washers, dryers, portable hand washing stations. And then for transportation, that deals with providing bus tokens or either ride share such as the paratransit to and from the medical care. Then on our next slide, this is our last category that actually deals with street outreach eligible cost. For this section, it deals with engagement of urgent physical needs. So as you're engaging those individuals, the staff may need hand sanitizers, soap, tissue packets, as well as masks. Then also equipping the staff with masks, disposable gloves, hand sanitizer, and other personal protective equipment. It also deals with case management as far as coordinating medical services. And then transportation, bus tokens for individuals as well as ride shares such as paratransit to and from medical care. Now, we've talked about the two categories that are available. We've talked about the emergency solutions funds. We've also talked about the community development block grant funds. The next slide actually talks about one, a couple of things that we are required to do to actually accept the funds. The first thing is, is that we're required to prepare and submit a substantial amendment to our current Macon-Biv County Action Plan that includes funding as an available, this particular funding as an available source. So that includes the plan that we brought to you last, earlier last year, as far as our budget, what type of activities we're going to do, and what type of programs we will have for our community. So one of the things that the federal government is requiring through the Department of Housing and Urban Development is that we must update that plan. As a part of updating that plan, Economic and Community Development has started the initial process where we have held two funding availability webinars to give agencies information about the funds and how to apply for those funds. As we move to the next slide, that we will talk a little bit about what the methodology was that we used. So to send out the availability of funding information for the emergency solutions grant, these are funds for homeless providers. So we actually provided, sent out emails to the Macon Coalition to End Homelessness, as well as other members and agencies that expressed an interest in homeless services. For the community development block grant side, we actually sent out an email to all of the agencies that attended our community development block grant pre-funding workshop in the past, as well as agencies who have been expressed in an interest in community development over the last year. So from that, we go to our next slide. And for our first webinar, we actually did Emergency Solutions CV webinar, which was held on April the 29th at 10:00 a.m. And there were 30 participants, and we did all of these via Zoom. And we actually received four applications as a result of that. The second session that we did for community development block grant funds was actually done on May the 1st, and that one was done at 2:00 p.m. in the afternoon. We had approximately 35 participants, and we've received 14 applications with regards to receiving funds. As we move to the next slide, we're going to give you a little bit of an update of what our next steps are and where we are. So we are excited that we've actually received applications for funding. We're in the process of reviewing that information as far as those applications, and we will contact those applicants. The next phase after we have reviewed all the application and contacted applicants for any additional information that we may need, that we will put together the substantial amendment that requires a public notice. So one of the things with these funding sources is, is that HUD has provided us the opportunity to actually apply for a waiver wherein the public notice would last approximately five days, where we would advertise all the information, receive citizens' comments, and then submit what those recommendations, as far as the substantial amendment is, to the Commission for Review and Approval, along with any other comments that we may receive from the actual citizens, if there are any comments. The last step after that is done is that we must provide this document, as well as any other supporting document, to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So I know that that was a lot of information. So do we have any questions as to these two particular funding sources and the process that Economic and Community Development is using?
Okay, question, Commissioner Allen? Did you have a question?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Oh, you led up. Does anybody have any questions? What's in it, do you anticipate setting up a loan fund for a small business that's impacted? I saw one area in there that allowed for that. And there are so many small businesses. And you remember this loan fund recently that was set up where small businesses could qualify for $3,000? And the money was gone. I think there were only maybe 13 businesses that qualified, and all the money was gone. businesses that qualified, and all the money was gone. And so there are a lot of small businesses that are, that are struggling. So, do you anticipate something like that?
Yes, ma'am, we do. We are actually in the process of looking at setting up a small business loan that would actually be done through our particular office. And we will provide that information moving forward, once we solidify all of the logistics and the guidelines for that program. That will be submitted as a part of our substantial amendment to you all for review.
Okay, and make sure we all know when that, that takes place so that we can notify small businesses that are in our districts, and maybe they can get some help, because a lot of them are going under.
Yes, ma'am.
If they don't get some help.
So for the, ultimately, the allocation of funds, I'm not sure if I'm understanding what our plan is. Part of it is reallocating it amongst other agencies? And I assume we're gonna do some in-house work as well? Am I thinking about that right?
Well, what we're actually doing is we are looking at the applications that have been received, and based upon those applications that have been received, that we will present what those particular activities are. For small business, small business depending upon what you're actually proposing, that's gonna be difficult for another organization to do outside of our office. So we are looking at that as a need, and we are planning on doing that in-house.
Okay, so that small business piece in-house?
Yes.
And you said applications have been received, so the process for submission and all that is closed?
At this particular time, that particular process is closed. What we do anticipate is that for our Community Development Block Grant Funds, that we will be doing another round. But one of the requirements of the, to initially start the process is the substantial amendment. With the substantial amendment, we must actually put at least a basis of what we will be providing as far as our community is concerned. So we needed a benchmark to actually start at.
And that marks the existing applications, okay, so?
Yes, we are currently reviewing those existing applications, and based upon that, we will be presenting some recommendations to you all.
Okay, Commissioner Wynn?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Juan Zena, thank you for your report. As always, quick, you mentioned in your report that there were some small businesses that had gotten some money. There was a group in Macon that got, that was formed to give out money to small businesses. I, I'm not sure if it was a thousand a piece or three thousand a piece.
Three, three thousand.
And that money was gone pretty quickly. Will you be coordinating to find out if those businesses, the businesses that apply to you already received some money from that, that pot of money to see if you can make sure that everybody's not double dipping? That everybody gets a piece of it, that those people that already got some are not coming to you to get some more?
Well, one of the requirements as a part of these funds, I'm glad you brought that up, is that we cannot have the duplication of services. So in the letter that we actually received that gave us some guidance moving forward, that both for Emergency Solutions Grant funding, as well as Community Development Block Grant Funds, that we will need to coordinate as far as those agencies that may provide those services to try to cut down as far as the duplication of services. What we're also doing in our office is putting together an actual guidebook or what our policy will be as far as duplication of services is concerned.
Thank you. I know that the people that got three thousand need probably a lot more than that, but I'd like to see everybody at least get a first, first chance at the money, and then come back.
One thing that your program would be loans, though, the other was a grant. The other program was a grant, and three thousand doesn't last any business too long. Once you pay rent and one more thing, maybe you've covered the rent and one more thing. That's it. I know with small businesses that I'm familiar with, but yours would be a loan, is that?
That's what we're actually looking at at this particular time. But I will also say that we are looking at some of the programs that are being put together as far as the federal level with Community Development and Block Grant Funds to also determine if that may be something that will be feasible in our community as well. And some of them may actually be forgivable loans as well, as, as long as they stay in business, and they actually provide the, the requirement of the funds provided for the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
But it would be loans, no grants. Be paid back.
Yes. Apologize, I got cut off. I just wanna, and, and Juan Zena, and I know the attorney can't correct me. We received this money, I'm aware that we received this money more than three weeks ago. I was contacted, and I was on a call by the Black Legislative Caucus that said we were gonna be receiving one point five million dollars. My understanding that this money is unforgivable, that this is not the typical C G G B D grant money, and that its purpose was broad and could be used for a number of things that Juan Zena has indicated. And, and so the Commission needs to be aware. When you say that Macon-Biv had to do a, has to do a plan, we've already received the money, so the plan was done, to my knowledge, I think a while back. And it was, when you say specific targeted, but then the wide range of things that you listed, you know, just doesn't, you know, almost sounds completely. So, can you tell us when you received the money? And the Legislative Caucus, I was on a call with them three weeks ago, and they said we was getting one point five. And you've sort of broken it down into one point one million and then, then five hundred and some thousand dollars. So number one, can you tell the Commission when we received the money? Because my understanding is we received it more than three weeks ago. And why do we come on the call today and act as though we've just received the money?
Well, can I, can I address that?
I was asking her. Because, because you know, unless you're gonna say that we have been received the money, and you're just telling the Commission today, and this is what we talk about transparency. And then, you know, I have to come on here and almost sound like the bad guy.
Mr. Moffett?
I just need the, the, the process. I mean, I think, just, I'm saying, we have not received, and, and Juan Zena, please correct me, we've not received. We've been allocated the funds. And in order to do that, we had to do a plan. One, notifying the recipients that would be eligible for it. And so we did that over the last week. I believe I told Commissioners this about three weeks ago, that this was coming, and that we wanted to make sure there was a fair process, and that instead of opening it up, going through our normal process that we normally do, here of advertising and everything, that we will work with those agencies that we already have the relationship with. So we've been, so you and E C D have been working on this for the last three weeks to present this to the Commissioners of how we will distribute the funds. The clear, we've not received a check. We've been, we've received notification that we have been allocated these funds.
Well, can I go back to three weeks ago when I was on the call? And I asked the question, because I knew that we were receiving the money. I said, when we were talking about revenue shortages and so forth, and I said that the government, or the federal government, was gonna send us money because of our issue. And Attorney Groover so eloquently stated that, you know, we had not received any funding, and I don't know if he was not aware, but that question came up. And so when you say you told us three weeks ago, I asked a specific question because I had been talking to the Legislative Caucus, and they had told me it was coming. And they were trying to talk to certain Commissioners so we could start to formulate a plan and try to help these businesses and these business owners that were suffering. So that's what they were concerned about, helping those people that had been suffering and trying to make sure everybody received testing for COVID and the P P Es. And so, so I, I will yield from there. But when you say you told us three weeks ago, and I guess it didn't matter at this point, but I just don't like it when we come on a call on today and act as though something just happened right now. And, and that's the only thing I'm bringing up. Thank you.
Okay, well, Smear, did you have something? On, on me?
Thank you. And Juan Zena can certainly correct me if, if I misspeak. But we were notified, as Dr. Moffett said, that this was an allocation that we would receive. However, it was my understanding that additional guidelines for how you could spend the money would be forthcoming. And I think that's what we've recently received now and are trying to present to you. There are certain restrictions on this, and the final point that I would make, I think this is a reimbursement grant. I think we're gonna have to upfront the money, I believe, and then ask for reimbursement from this. Juan Zena, is that right? Is this a reimbursement, or do we get the money first and then spend it?
Sorry, you are correct. You are correct.
So it's a, it's a, it's a reimbursement, and you better believe we ain't gonna, we ain't gonna spend it unless we get the guidelines and the guidance and know we can get reimbursed. So that's all I was gonna say. Thank you.
So we are assured that we will be reimbursed, because if it's like, see my money, we don't ever get fully reimbursed.
Amen. Yeah, amen. We don't, right. You better be really careful about how you spend this money. So we've been waiting on the guidelines to come down and follow the procedure. Follow the procedure, because you, you do not wanna spend the money and then not be able to get, be reimbursed for it.
Correct. And, and if I could just add.
Yes.
Commissioner Tillman is correct, that there are several phone calls and several conversations going on. But as it relates to these funds, this was the process and the procedure that we were told about how to go about doing it. That again, we've not received a dime so far. It is reimbursable. We've been told what the allocation amount is. The, the two parts that we concentrating on are homelessness and I hate to say food distribution, but those agencies that helped with that. So Juan Zena has done a great job of contacting those agencies. They did a educational, where all the agencies were able to phone in and ask their questions. They did their applications or, or submitted what they would like to do. And so Juan Zena is updating on you on the next steps in the process.
Okay, I, I would be interested in knowing the, those different agencies that had submitted proposals. Though, the, there were two different categories. So if you have that information, if you could share that with us, not now, but just kind of share it in an email. We can all at least be brought up to speed on what's in place now. And then we will place you on the agenda, what, for two weeks, to get whatever update you have, because we do need to be kept in the loop on, on this additional monies that will come into the community.
Madam Chair. Yes, thank you. May I ask Keith Moffett or either the mayor, have we gotten the guidelines that we need to have in order to, you know, how to use this money? Have we gotten those guidelines yet?
Three weeks ago. My, my, well, my impression is the guidelines that we just received recently, because when Juan Zena and I sat down initially, we were waiting on guidelines. So Juan Zena, when, when did we get the additional guidelines that you've just been over with us in the PowerPoint presentation?
That's what I was gonna say. We just got this.
We're actually still receiving updates with regards to information. One of the guidelines that we were waiting on was flexibilities of the C D B G grant, and that was one of the things that I did mention as a part of that, as a part of the presentation, that was received in April, as far as those particular updates. There is also another update that is supposed to give us some additional guidance based upon the information that we received. It says that there's some additional guidance that's coming, but we needed to go ahead and move forward with our substantial amendment. And so that is the process that we're currently doing. We've also reached out to, I've also reached out to our Department of Housing and Urban Development representative at our Atlanta C P D Office, Community Planning Office. And they have said, yes, go ahead, move forward as far as the substantial amendment. We received some additional guidance on Friday that gave us information on how to actually submit the substantial amendment in the integrated software system, which is the financial system that is provided through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And there is some more, some more additional information that we do anticipate. But what we've been told so far is that if we follow the process of everything that we've been given so far, that hopefully that will trigger the grant agreement that we can then present and then move forward as far as funding in our treasury.
Well, thank you for the answer, because Commissioner Lucas made a good point that if we don't have our ducks in a row, we're not gonna get our money back. So we need to make sure we've got all the guidelines met so that we can get any monies that we're doing.
Get the money back.
I am glad that you are certain we will get our money back. I, I too would like to, to know what the plan looks like, the final thing looks like, who will actually get the money, and what services will be provided. Because I remember in the past, we got one point five million dollars that was during the mother, for the Mother State Storm, and it ended up going as a loan to someone who was developing. And I voted against that. And, and I don't know, I think that money was finally paid back to us. But we don't wanna take that money that's intended to alleviate problems in the community and misuse it. And so, anyway, any, any further comments? Because I know we have taken longer than we anticipated, but is there anything else to come before the committee? All right, if not, I think we've got everything taken care of, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, Chairman Lucas. Next committee is Operations and Finance, Chairman Watkins. Members of the committee are Commissioner Schlesinger, Commissioner Bibbins, Commissioner Lucas, and Scotty Shepherd. So Scotty never has joined us, so Chairman Watkins, you, you got four members of your, of your committee. Would, and, and I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, sir. First item on our agenda today is the approval of the minutes from the April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty Committee Meeting. We have approved. A motion in a second. All the favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. We have four items on our agenda today for action. Well, first one that's on my mind, Mr. Mayor, I sent a email requesting some information on revenues. Haven't heard a response back. I trust we're working on it.
Yes, sir. This is about, uh, uh, last year and, and this year's, for March, April, May kind of thing?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Right. I, I, I think that, that Kristi Eluche is working on that, and, and Julie Moore as well.
All right, look forward to seeing it. Our next item is two A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to approve a professional services agreement with Replay Systems Inc. for the purchase and installation of the E nine-one-one voice recording system and maintenance agreement in the amount of one hundred seventy-three thousand, one hundred thirty-nine dollars, zero cents to be paid from the capital improvement funds, E nine-one-one machinery equipment. This was budgeted and sponsored by Mayor Robert A. B. Ricker.
Yes, that is, that is correct. This is a budgeted item for the E nine-one-one voice recording system. Again, it's to replace the current system we have there. Remember, this is a technology that, uh, end of life on the current system has expired. So we, we've kind of delayed this as long as we could, and we really need to update this equipment.
Have a motion. Have a motion in a second. Further discussion?
What do you do with the old stuff? If anything?
Well, primarily, it'll be the backup until we can no longer maintain it.
So, so this new equipment is just kind of integrated into?
Yes, ma'am.
What you have and so it's kind of an upgrade more than replacement?
Well, it has some new, it has some new features and functionality that, of course, with technology, that is kind of like you when you upgrade your, your cell phone. You have new, new things you can do with that, but with the old one, it'll be the backup until we can no longer maintain that. And, and, and we've had some problems with it. And 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 we've had some problems with it currently.
All right, further discussion? There being none, all the favor, please say aye. Any opposed? This motion carries.
What's the how much is in the E nine one one fund? Don't we we collect? From every cell phone user, right? What is the dollar in?
Yeah, it's a dollar, I believe a dollar fifty cent.
Dollar fifty?
For all the phones that are built to this to this county.
And it goes into this E nine one one fund?
Yes, ma'am.
How much is in there?
I have to get the amount. I don't have it in front of me. I can get that to you.
I'm assuming it's at least one hundred seventy three thousand dollars, so.
I can't that too. I get the number in front of me, but yes, but but it but all those funds go to E nine one operations, but it is not enough to cover the E nine one operations.
Really?
All right. B is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Middle Georgia Outdoor Lighting in the amount of two hundred thirteen thousand. And eighty dollars for the installation of Musco lighting system at Bloomfield Park and Recreation Center to be paid by the twenty eighteen squad.
My my understanding, Clay Murphy may be available, but this is Bloomfield. This and item next, item C. One is for the installation, the other is to purchase the lights for Bloomfield Recreation. Clay, are you there?
Yes, sir.
And and remind me our relationship when it comes to like, I know Musco has won probably. Did they win one bid or are they winning? Multiple bids each time?
They are not bid out there with a state contract and they provide the L E D package. So what we've done is convert the entire, basically all the ball fields in the county to the same lighting package. The twenty five year warranty, they come in, a bulb goes out, they come in and reflect replace it within seventy two hours. Anything happens to it for twenty five years, they're one hundred percent responsible for it.
Motion to approve? Further discussion? There being none, all the favor, please say aye. Any opposed? This motion carries. Next item on our agenda is C is a resolution with the mayor to execute a purchase agreement with Musco Sports Lighting in the amount of four hundred eighty four thousand. For the installation of lighting systems at Bloomfield Park and Recreation Center to be paid from the twenty eighteen squad. A motion for approval?
I move.
Yeah, second?
Second.
Any any conversation? There being none, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Last item for action on our agenda is item D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase agreement with North American Fire Equipment Company. In the amount of forty seven thousand, one hundred six thirty six dollars and twenty five cent. For the purchase of a V force fire protective gear to be paid from the general funds, fire department training and other supplies line item. A motion for approval?
I move.
Further discussion? There being none? All the favor, please say aye. Any opposed? This motion carries. Last item I left on, I know we had a discussion last week, but has the administration anything to add about hazard pay or? Want to leave it out there as a. Conversation topic that we.
The 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 only conversation, the only addition is that I recently received information that some entities were counting on. If there was gonna be a reimbursement from the federal government for. If they implemented some form of hazard pay and FEMA has released a policy saying if you did not have a policy in place prior to the pandemic. That this would not be a reimbursable item. So that's the only additional information I have on it.
All right. There's nothing else for the good of the order we are adjourned?
Oh, I have one. Just so you know, to keep it, Ms. Lucas, we have not forgotten that you had a request for a up legal claims. Duke is prepared to give that when we get back into a setting where we can go through executive session to do that. So just know that those are all the items that you asked me about. So I believe that all the. And all the items that commissioners asked me about as we do our weekly calls, I believe we covered everything, so.
Oh, yeah. My first part of my notes. Right away, street cleaning, where where are we? I'm sending you pictures of stuff that's aggravated me.
Well, remember, over the last six weeks, we have a reduced worst. We are getting things back up and running. This past Monday, all employees are reporting back to work under the County Managers Department. So we did have some work schedules. We know that when it came to cutting and mowing, that we had a reduction with the prison crews. So matter of fact, I would love to share with you that we've done some out of the box things. If you drive over by Buford Park, you see that we. Have contracted with a gentleman that provides. For the lack of a better word, animals that eat some of the. Grass on that area. So we are trying to do some out of the box things that saving us some money in the long run. But as far as the cuttings and things like that, we are getting back on 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 track with that.
So does that mean that prison crew and if I'm understanding correctly, based on our previous conversation, when it comes to our right away maintenance. We rely on prison crews for what? More than fifty percent of that work?
No, but but it it it. I don't know the exact percentage of it, but we did rely on it for some of it and that that was greatly reduced. So we are trying to. Get that back up and running. Well, I don't think we're gonna have access to the prison crews because of the restrictions. But we are modifying our schedules to get that back up and running.
So we paid for the prison crews upfront and now we're not giving them for the rest of the year. It's not a small number. I remember this from my.
I don't think we pay for them upfront, but if we're not using them, we're not paying them for. So we are seeing a, I believe we will be able to show a savings of what we did not use for that.
A savings or a reallocation in some way to get my grass cut?
Can I speak to that for just a moment? Because I actually spoke with the staff council. Who oversees the prison contracts that we had in place. And all billing. For us as a recipient was put on hold at the time that the work crew stopped coming out. So we have not been billed for any time that that they weren't able to conduct services. I've actually received just this week renewals for next year. It's my understanding that. We will not be renewing with one of the prisons, but we are still interested in resuming. The 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 crew maintenance with another one of the facilities. So those just came in this week.
And I say that because that contract is nothing to sneeze at. I mean, it's it's spread out over several departments, but you're north of half a million dollars.
But but answer your question, we have not started a we I've not looked at reallocating those dollars just yet. And you have to prove that reallocation. So. In in meeting with the parks director to look at how we're gonna modify it, because if you remember, the very first thing we gave you was a financial update. We have some some serious decisions to make down the road. Well, in the near future. And so all that is on the table as far as do we look at modifying services? Do we increase some services, decrease some services? So all that is going into our conversations around the table right now for us to present back to you for your approval.
And and I respect that. I think Mr. Aaron highlighted the need of data. To make that and I and I see you commission a win. And he highlighted the need of data and we're looking forward to that. But at a certain point, we've got to find a way to get the grass cut. So. You could be in the near future providing some type of recommendation. Ms. Lynn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Since Keith, since you brought this up about the roads and stuff, do we still have a street sweeper in Macon Bibb County? And if we do, is it operating? And if we have one, can we run it up from Forsyth Road on Napier Avenue? All the way up to Park and Ayers because that road is in need of bad cleanup, both trash. Sofas and mattresses and all kinds of stuff along that little street.
That's that's well, that's two issues there, but one, yes, we do have a street sweeper program. I would check on, I know that we had three at one time, but two of them needed severe maintenance. So we were down to one. I would check and see where we are with that. But if you can send me that information, as always, I will make sure that it's in the queue to see it's on the schedule and I'll let you know exactly when it can be done.
Because I think we and you and I have mentioned, yeah, I'd mentioned the street sweeper to you on that strip of nature there, but I'll I'll send you an email.
Well, I don't know what part of Napier she's talking about because that's a newly paved road in the last eight months.
If you come off. If you come off Forsyth Road and go past the new cherry blossom car wash, go up Napier to where Park and Ayers is, there's that that's little stretch right there is just awful.
The part with the debris and everything, I always have to remind commissioners that we first give the property owner a chance to clean it. We will go out, we will tag it. And give them a chance to clean it. If not, then we go back out and we're working at figuring out how we can bill them through the solid waste. For the special handling fee. But you remember, this this is a process of of trying to. Not as as Mr. Tillman say, reward bad behavior. So when people put a whole bunch of stuff out on the curb, we try to give them an opportunity to clear it up first.
Well, I mean, it's not that it's trash along that right of way and in the road and the grass is growing in the road. I'll send you an email.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And so you say we have a street sweeper? I I you gotta prove it to me like. It has a schedule and someone sweeps streets in Macon?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, prove that to me through an email or a picture or something.
I'll definitely do that.
I'd like to see it, too.
All right, not a problem.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We do have a street sweeper. I don't know that they have a schedule, but that's not what I wanted to mention. And Keith, the what happened? I thought we were going to discuss the Tobasofki project. We do have a.
We did. I did tell you that. And speaking with the attorneys on yesterday, they are they are still reviewing it. And that once they finish their review, they get back with us.
I I hope I hope we can have that ready for pre-commission, Commissioner Jones. We we're getting a lot a lot of pressure to try to get it done.
Very interested in that and Keith sent me an ask a breakdown. So I knew that was, I thought we were going to cover that today, but next Tuesday, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else? Anybody else? If not, we are adjourned.
That was the final committee meeting. Just one one last time, please mark down on your calendar next week, the nineteenth, we'll start at four o'clock with a special call meeting to present the budget. Then go to pre-commission at five and regular commission meeting at six. So a full full meeting starting at four o'clock next Tuesday. So please put that in. We'll meet again by Zoom unless something really changes dramatically between now and then, which I do not anticipate. So if there's no further business for us this morning.
Mr. Mayor, before we go.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I've been talking to just off the record, the county manager about this issue. I would love to talk to you about this and and even commissioners. You know, you're about to put forth your budget and of course, this is an election year. Mr. Mayor, we have candidates out there that's putting out false information about this government. How we bankrupted small business owners and how we've just overspent. And if you're not gonna address this issue. I'm gonna reach out to commi commissioners and we don't have to address this issue because. It's okay to sometimes listen to citizens come and speak for five minutes. But somebody is running for office that's putting out wrong information about this government. That's just gonna be unacceptable. And if if your staff can begin to give you some. Specifics that have been stated. We have got to defend this government because that is a blatant lie to say that we have bankrupted businesses. And that we've overspent. This government had a mandate of twenty percent. And, you know, people forget that your administration. In two years. Followed the mandate of twenty percent reduction. And over a hundred and fifty. People took the buyout. Making up the seventy percent of their salaries. And now you've got to correct this or we've got to start correcting this. Because you can't force people to be law enforcement officers. When you can go and work and start out at Kumo and Irving for forty and sixty thousand dollars. People are just changing the way they want to work. And and I say that seriously, Mr. Mayor. Because in growing up as little boys, we all wanted to be policing firefighters. And today's culture, some of that has changed. And so when somebody's out there misleading, you don't allow us as commissioners to get away with some of the stuff that some of these folks are saying. And I just find it hard to believe that you're gonna continue to just let these folk get away with it. You got to defend yourself. We got to defend this commission. And somebody needs to step forward and do it. And that's all I have to say.
Very good. I I we'll we'll try to take that into account in the budget message. Point point well made. There's a lot that we as a commission can be proud of what we've done. So point well made and we'll we'll try to include some of that commentary in in the budget message next week, four o'clock. Okay, if there's nothing else, then we've completed our agenda. Thank you, everybody for your patience and we are adjourned.
Bye, y'all.